I have seven o'clock, but I don't see Ezra yet. We'll give him just a second. A minute. Look, my have seven oh one, we will go ahead and get started. So IT is ready. Call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, December 21st, 2020. And this evening, I've asked Mr. Bates if he would open our meeting in prayer this evening. So Mr. Bates.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this day and remind us to be cognizant of the reason for the season. May we be aware that it is more blessed to give than to receive. Please extend your peace to our citizens of Greenwood, including the employees, elected officials, and first responders. Thank you again for your protection and the prosperity we enjoy. And may you receive the credit for such in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson. Ms. Gibson.
Linda, you're muted.
Talking, Janine.
All right. Hill is absent. Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Donaldson is absent. And Williams.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum of seven. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our regular meeting of December the seventh. Do you have a motion?
I'm going to accept the minutes.
Most of Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
My Mr. Was that Mr. Dine?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, roll call.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Ezra says he can't get logged on.
Okay.
Maybe IT could help him.
Yeah, IT, if you could help Mr. Hill, that would be great.
Has joined the meeting.
Roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Linda, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Can someone text her? Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Williams.
Aye.
Okay, I'll take that as a seven to zero on approving the minutes from our last meeting. Reports, Corporation Council.
You all should have received the item semi-monthly and also the 2020 closed out report for litigation. And should you have questions about either of those, please contact me and I'll be happy to discuss them with you.
Right, any questions at this time? Hearing none, then anything from the controller at this time?
Not at this time.
All right, Committee of Board reports, all of you should have received copies of my report on the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Any other committee or board reports? All right, moving on, this is an opportunity then we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you are here, would like to speak to the council, please speak up, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit. All right, anyone?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Chuck Baker. Do you need my address?
Yeah, your address, please.
Has joined the meeting.
Seven eight five zero Penny Royal Lane, Indianapolis, Indiana. Four six two three seven.
All right. And go ahead.
Okay, I didn't know if I had to be sworn in or not.
No.
Okay, very good. I'm have comments regarding ordinance two zero dash four five. I am the current president of the Indianapolis RC South Club that flies radio-controlled models off of land located in the southwest corner of the area affected by that ordinance. We have been renting about four acres of land from the Taylor family for about forty-five years now. So in addition to our normal flying activities, we host several events during the year that benefit the community. These include aviation orientation sessions for grade school kids, Cub Scouts, and senior citizens, where we introduce them to model aviation and let them try their hand at flying some of our aircraft. Our main event during the year is an RC airshow for the public that benefits the American Diabetes Association. Our club members and club members from surrounding clubs participate in this event, which has raised more than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the past thirty years. We understand that urban sprawl is inevitable and that we will likely lose our field next year due to this rezoning and ordinance. But I wanted to address you this evening, make you aware of hopes that someone on the council might know of a location that we could possibly relocate to that would allow to continue to fly and support the community. Give them consideration.
And thank you, Mr. Baker. We appreciate that. And I'm sure the council, if they have any information, would be happy to pass that on to you. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? All right, hearing none, then moving on, ordinances or resolutions, notice of intent to consider ordinance number twenty forty-five.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference in Unified Development Ordinance number twenty-two-nine. Proposed rezoning for approximately one hundred fifty-two point five acres located at the northwest corner of Morseville and Griffiths Roads, Jennifer L. Baker and John W. Taylor Properties, sponsored by Dine.
All right, someone here to speak to this? All right, Mr. Henderson.
Yes, sir.
All right, would you like to speak to this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. Again, my name is Richard Henderson. I'm with Premier Land Company at address one oh one six nine one Fall Creek Road, Suite two ten in Indianapolis. Unfortunately, Joe Calderon, my attorney, is out sick tonight, so he's I'm here to try to attempt to fill his shoes, so bear with me as I make the presentation tonight. We have filed a petition for a zoning map change from the agricultural district to RA residential attached and RM residential medium lot. Let me share my screen here to bring up PowerPoint with you. A second. Again, the site is bordered on the south by agricultural and meets and bounds residential. On the east, by agricultural as well, also owned by the Taylor family. On the north, we have some residential as well as the Stagg Industrial Building. And then on the west, we're bordered by the new First Mile Facility and parcel owned by Clark Pleasant Schools. This, in regard to some more site specifics features, we have Hurricane Creek that bisects the southeast corner of the property, which provides for our drainage outlet. We have sanitaries available to the site by way of the City of Greenwood's Regional Lift Station located on Morseville Road. And we now also have the extension of Graham Road to our west property boundary. Site also has two large natural wooded areas on the northwest corner and southwest corners of the site. The city's proposed future land use plan on the comprehensive shows a mixed use for the property, which and we're and we believe our proposed RA and RM zoning classification will fit well within that comprehensive plan designation. And it's a good transition to the existing industrial uses located on the north and the west boundaries of the property. Our proposed site plan shows eighty-three lots or one hundred and sixty-six units in yellow, which are attached villa units on sixty-two point four acres for the RA zoning. We have one hundred and seventy-five single-family lots on approximately eighty-nine point three acres designated under the RM zoning. Our plan proposes a total of three hundred and forty-one units, providing a density of two point two four units per acre.
Colleen Evans.
Has left the meeting.
And provides for sixty acres, thirty-nine point five percent of the site in common open space with thirteen point eight acres of tree preservation within that common area designation. The plan also provides for three points of access, one on Griffiths Road, one on Morseville Road, and then the connection to Graham Road that was recently extended to the site. In the Plan Commission meeting, we had a few remonstrators, our property owner to the north, immediate north adjutor. Some concerns in regard to some landscape buffer to his property. So one thing that we have added or willing to commit to tonight's meeting is to extend our landscaping buffer to the back of his improvements on Griffiths Griffiths Road, adding additional five plus or minus trees to buffer his his building and that location. Since the Plan Commission hearing, have made a decision to move forward with MI Homes as our builder now for the Grand Vista community. And the following slides or pictures and representative products of some of MI's product line that we'd be offering. This is their villa product, which is their duplex repaired product that they would put within the RA zoning classification. And the following pictures are some of MI Homes Smart Series, which would be represented to what would be built on the RM single-family block classification. And the last couple of slides are some representative interior finishes for MI's product from some of their models of the same product line. We are filing for straight zoning. We are not requesting any waivers within the RA and RM zoning classifications. And thank you for your time and or welcome to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Right, any of the counselors have a question for?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one here either for Richard or Shawna or whomever. On page seven, there are the ordinance on side yard setback. If somebody wants to look at that reference, on page seven, side yard setback. It calls for eight feet for each side yard. And then there's a colon, then it says zero between attached dwelling units. That is not the same as we tackled some years ago where we talked about zero lot lines. Is it?
No, this is where they have a duplex where it's you have two homes that are attached. There's no side yard setback between them.
Okay.
They're actually attached to one another.
That's that's just then in the that RA part of the proposed ordinance.
Yes, if you'll see at the top of that in the green, it says RA standards.
Okay, well, that was just something I looked through and it caught my eye to have an explanation of what that what that was standing for.
Right, sure.
Only question I had.
All right, any other questions? I do have a clarification. Mr. Henderson mentioned that they were willing to commit to that additional landscape buffer on the north end with the other property. I just want to make sure that if it's not, that it is, or do we need to make an amendment, or is that already in the proposal?
It is not in the current commitment. We would have to add that as an additional commitment, and it would be helpful if Mr. Henderson could tell us the name of the property owner so that we could I can put that in there with like a parcel number, and I believe what he said was he would extend the landscape buffer to the back of the property of, I need that parcel, by five plus or minus trees. I don't know if you want a certain distance of the extension, Mr. Henderson. How far that's lengthwise?
Looks like it's Cheryl George is the property owner, Shawna.
Yes.
Okay. Want to confirm that.
All right, and you said plus or minus five trees.
You want to commit to five evergreens.
Okay, five evergreen trees.
So you would extend your landscape buffer by five evergreen trees to the back of the Cheryl George property?
His improvements.
Is it a giant barn or garage that she wants blocked? Is that what it is?
It is a barn, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I will entertain a motion to amend ordinance twenty forty-five to that effect. Most of Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the amendment?
That is an amendment to add the additional commitment as discussed.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, then roll call on amendment to ordinance twenty forty-five.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye. Ordinance twenty forty-five is amended on a vote of seven to zero. Any other discussion on ordinance twenty forty-five as amended? I guess at this point, we probably ought to get a motion to put it on the floor.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion on ordinance twenty forty-five.
I'll move.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Hopper. All right, any further discussion on ordinance twenty forty-five?
Mr. Campbell, listen, Councilman Hill, I just want to let you know I'm on.
Oh, good. Councilman Hill is here, so please make a register that. I'm sorry.
I had to call in, so I'm not on via
Okay.
iPad, but I called in.
All right, good. Glad you're here. All right, any further discussion on ordinance twenty forty-five as amended?
I do, Mr. Campbell.
Okay.
As I recall, we didn't have a builder when this was before the planning commission, and now we do, so that's good. I'd like to see us stay consistent with what we've done, such as like the Arbor Homes, where they committed to no vinyl and hardy plank only in addition to the brick or stone. I'd like to see us be consistent with that and keep that on the east side of the city as well. So I'd like to make a motion to commit to hardy plank and no vinyl.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hopper to amend ordinance twenty forty-five to add the condition no vinyl and the use of hardy plank or some, I don't know if hardy plank is a
Oh, that's the brand name, isn't it?
Brand name, yeah. Fiber cement board or something like that?
Fiber cement.
Yeah, I will second it for the sake of discussion.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Bates. Mr. Henderson, do you have a comment on that?
Um, I guess the open up discussion, the ordinance has three different options within the within the ordinance as far as architectural standards. We have not had conversations with our builder to restrict them from anything within the latest architectural standards. We were hoping to follow, you know, the ordinance allows them, you know, to either take that option of all hardy plank or an option with with vinyl. We would like to leave that within our ordinance per your new architectural standards, giving our builder those three options to choose from, for them to select which route they would they prefer to take, whether it's it's a restriction on vinyl or allowing vinyl with the additional brick and other standards written within the current ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any discussion on the council concerning the proposed amendment?
Mr. Campbell, at a point of maybe with this property, I understand, Mr. Hopper, I definitely agree with the trying to keep consistency, especially on the east side, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I also understand too, kind of what we're looking at with this property of trying to be transitional from industrial warehousing into residential, and I think we all know that it's going to be very difficult to get, you know, half a million dollar homes up next to some of these warehouses. So I understand the need for transitional. So could we discuss maybe the potential of allowing the vinyl option maybe in the duplexes, but then we can maybe use the hardy plank towards the single family to kind of create that transitional and obviously a little bit more suitable on a single-family home to allow for that hardy plank, but also maybe to provide the brick vinyl option in those duplex transitional units.
Right.
Mr. President, is it possible that maybe Mr. Henderson would want us to table this and him have an opportunity to talk to the MI Homes? And then us have this on the agenda at our first meeting in January?
Mr. Henderson, what are your thoughts on that? The possibility of postponing the vote on this until our next meeting?
I do have a representative with MI Homes that has logged down on for us. Keith Blaze with MI is also on the call. I would open it up to him as well. I'm not necessarily opposed to extending it to next to the next meeting. But he is available on the call to potentially be involved with that discussion.
All right, if say his name was Mr. Blaze.
Yes, Keith Blaze. Can you unmute yourself, Keith, and join in?
Yep, I should be there. Good evening, everybody.
Yes, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, my name is Keith Blaze. I'm a vice president of land with MI Homes. Our address is eighty-four twenty-five Woodfield Crossing Boulevard, Indianapolis, Indiana.
I'm not sure what all you heard, but we do have an amendment proposed that would limit or actually exclude the use of vinyl and only be able to use fiber cement board on the exterior of the homes. That amendment has been a motion and a second. There's been some discussion of maybe allowing vinyl on the villa homes, but not on the single-family homes, single-family detached homes. What are your thoughts from MI Home?
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly Richard alluded to the the new ordinance and the flexibility that we have in the ordinance to allow customers to pick and choose, you know, what they want to do. However, I think the transitional use is a good point. We really would like to do, we do vinyl on our villa product because it's maintenance-free. It's also maintained by the homeowners association that are fully maintenance units. So if, you know, to bring on further discussion, we're certainly open to it, but I would really rather be in favor of allowing us to do the vinyl option on the RA paired villas and then look at the single-family home materials.
Right, Mr. Hopper, what are your?
Yeah, I just, I mean, history.
I'm going to support Mr. Hopper on this. I mean, we're being asked for a favor. So I think it's okay to apply a condition to that. It's a customary condition here in Greenwood. We've already applied it to another builder. This is Mr. Lexi. I I'm okay with requiring the hardy plank.
Thank you, Mr. Lexi. Yeah, I think just history has shown us that vinyl doesn't hold up as well as the cement fiber board. You know, twenty years later, you look at some of these vinyl housing, and I'm sure the vinyl industry would say we're, our vinyl is so much better now than it was twenty years ago. But clearly, cement fiber board holds up a lot better and just looks better, so. And I get the, I get your point, Mr. Williams, about it being transitional. It did look like to me, just from the drawings we saw quickly there, that there was quite a bit of buffer in between the industrial and the duplexes with, it looked like that's where the trees were going to be kept, so. Yeah, it'd be my preference to have the whole thing without vinyl.
All right, any further discussion? Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, then we do have a motion on the floor to require all of the buildings, all the homes to be hardy plank or fiber cement and no vinyl. With that, roll call on that amendment.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Mr. Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
I'll take that as a vote of seven to zero. We'll consider Mr. Hill and abstention, so that amendment passes seven to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty forty-five as amended?
To be procedurally precise, you amended this before you had it on the floor with a previous commitment regarding the trees. Would you take a vote to just reaffirm that commitment?
Okay.
Now properly on the floor.
Okay, we had, that was the amendment that required the additional landscaping, and we've already voted on that, but let's vote on that again to make sure we're following the procedure properly. So roll call on that first amendment.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye, I did hear Mr. Hill, so that amendment passes eight to zero. So now we have both amendments properly passed. Any further discussion on ordinance twenty forty-five as amended? Hearing none, and roll call, ordinance twenty forty-five.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates. Campbell.
Aye.
And Dine.
Ordinance twenty forty-five passes as amended on a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, or Mr., yeah, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Blaze, appreciate your time this evening. First reading, ordinance twenty forty-two.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, Chapter two, Article eight, Section two eighty-two, qualified retired employees and spouses group health insurance to better utilize disability benefits. Qualified Retired Employees and Spouses Group Health Insurance to better utilize disability benefits sponsored by Campbell.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second?
Second.
Mr. Lexi, any discussion, ordinance 2042? Hearing done and roll call ordinance 2042, first reading.
Hill? Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine? And Gibson?
Aye.
Ordinance 2042 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2043.
An ordinance to amend the text of Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter eight, Traffic and Parking Regulations, Article two, to amend Section eight-eight, limiting truck traffic on certain streets to include portions of Allen Road and Griffiths Road sponsored by Williams.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, I think, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion, ordinance 2043?
I would like a clarification. I believe that at the, um, introduction, the deputy mayor indicated he had telephone calls for some folks that lived along Griffiths Road that were in the county. We have to understand that when we annex territory easterly, we get the road that's connected to it. So we got Griffiths Road and we annexed to that point. So anyone that's along the west side of Griffiths Road, being our corporate boundaries, anyone on the eastern side of Griffiths Road would still be in the county. I think it was those folks that lived in the county who were concerned, they had trucks and truck tabs that they drive home and leave at their homes because they're allowed in the county to store their trucks on their property. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. We are regulating a road that's within our corporate boundaries, but there are folks that live along it, don't actually live in our city limits. So that you were fully informed when you decided if you wanted to make some sort of an exception, like you do for local deliveries, for those folks who maybe live out in the county who have trucks that have been using them, using the road to access their homes.
I believe in those situations, they are driving their tractor and without a trailer, if I'm, I understand that correctly.
I understand that, yeah.
All right, what are your thoughts, council?
Uh, Mr. President, I was just going to add a thought there to what Shawna was just saying, and that had to do with, I guess, as far as police power is concerned, that, uh, the police department will be, become aware of this situation so that they would not unduly ticket, uh, someone.
All right.
That's not, that's not in the city.
So if we're using a city road, they, they would be operating a truck on a city road, they would be-
Right, but they couldn't be stopped.
They could get a ticket, yeah, so that's, if you don't want to change it, that's up to you. I just want to make sure that you knew.
If we did make an exception for those who lived on, uh, Griffiths Road, how would that be worded? How would we do that?
You could make an exception. I think you make exception for local deliveries or for those who, uh, live along Griffiths Road outside the corporate boundaries of the city.
Okay.
Who have-
Amend it to-
You know-
State so-
All right. Does anyone want to make that amendment?
Is there anyone from the police department that is online that could give us insight?
Yes. Jim Eisen, police chief. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Eisen, Chief Eisen.
Yeah. I think, uh, obviously, we can enforce, uh, the ordinance on the roadway. Um, it becomes tricky, just as Shawna mentioned. Um, however, if it's specifically stated in the, in the, uh, ordinance, um, that those delivering, uh, locally or, um, living within the, uh, outside of the city limits on, off of, uh, Griffiths Road, um, you know, we can work around that. Uh, it would just have to be specifically stated. I think we get into a trick bag without putting that language in there.
All right. Do, I have someone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr.? Mr. Bates? All right, so we have an amendment on ordinance 2042 to allow for local deliveries and/or people who live on Griffiths Road outside city boundaries, uh, to be able to drive their tractors, but without a trailer, uh, to their home.
Wouldn't that be ordinance forty-three?
I'm sorry, yes, you're right. Ordinance forty-three.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
The, I thought the original, uh, intent of this ordinance was to keep the trucks from parking on the road, where we had all the complaints and everything, that they were blocking other traffic. When you're outside the count or in the county, you know, you can park whatever you want usually on your property, even with a trailer. So I would, Mr. Williams drafted or was sponsored this, I didn't know if it was just to keep the, off the roadway, to keep being-
Uh, I think the main thought was that we have the, the homecoming residential area on the north side of, uh, Allen Road in that, in that area, and Griffiths Road, as you go north from Allen especially, is not made for truck traffic, and especially if they want to turn onto, uh, Main Street, uh, they get stuck there on those corners all the time. So the idea was to keep the tractor trailers off of those roads. Um, and so that when they leave the distribution centers, they're not headed east on, uh, Allen Road, and they're all are going to go west or south on Collin, west on Allen or south on Collins to get over to the interstate. And, uh, that was the, the idea, so, uh, but it, but I think mainly it was to do with tractor trailers, not just the, uh, you know, they're just driving a tractor home. Uh, that's, that's a little different, and, and they can't be parking on the roads anyway, so.
I was going to say, the already ordinance is covering the driveways and stuff in University Park.
Right, yeah, they shouldn't be driving through University Park anyway. They might be, but they shouldn't. All right, any further discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2043? Hearing done and roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2043.
Hopper? Lexi?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Ordinance 2043 is amended on a vote of, uh, eight to zero. Any discussion on ordinance 2043 as amended? Hearing done and roll call ordinance 2043 as amended, first reading.
Lexi?
Aye.
Williams? Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
And Hopper?
Aye.
Ordinance 2043 passes first reading, eight to zero as amended. Resolution 2026.
A resolution of the common council, the city of Greenwood, Johnson County, Indiana, approving and consenting to the sale and assignment of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, Economic Development Subordinate Tax Impermeable Revenue Bonds of twenty nineteen, Series A, Echelon Project, sponsored by Hopper.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, is that right? Oh, Dine, I'm sorry. Mr. Dine. All right, any discussion, resolution 2026? Hearing done and roll call, resolution 2026, first reading.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Resolution 2026 passes first reading eight to zero. Second reading, resolution 2025.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city agreement and economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. LLSC Properties LLC, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, or Mr. Hopper, Mr. Hopper, second? Do I have a second?
I think it was Mr. Dine.
Oh, was it Mr. Dine made the motion?
No, the second.
And Mr. Hopper makes the second. All right, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Um, I think it was the two of us that spoke. You can give it to whoever you want.
All right, uh, any discussion, resolution 2025? Hearing done and roll call, resolution 2025, second reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
And William?
Aye.
Resolution 2025 passes second reading eight to zero. New business introduction, new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance twenty four, or, yeah, ordinance 2046.
An ordinance vacating a portion of platted ingress easement located within Lot three C, Block three, replat Block three A, President's South Business Center, Section one, sponsored by Campbell.
All right, anyone wish to speak to this at this time? Okay.
Joe Heck with Projects Plus?
All right.
Yes, Joe Heck, Projects Plus?
Yes.
Uh, just seeking the approval of a vacation of ten foot off a platted, uh, thirty foot ingress easement.
All right, did this go before the planning commission?
It did.
It did?
Uh, and the board of works, yes.
All right, I, I thought we got, yes, okay. All right, I assume it received approval from both of those?
Yes, it did.
All right. Any questions for, at this time, from the council?
No, the notice did go in the daily journal for when this coming week.
Okay. We, this is scheduled for a public hearing on January the fourth then. All right, ordinance 2047.
An ordinance amending the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance, common council ordinance number twenty thirty-one, to increase the number of probationate lateral transfer patrolman positions and decrease the number of probationary patrolman positions in the police department, sponsored by Dine.
All right, anyone want to talk about this one?
He should still be on, I think.
Yeah.
Joe Heck?
Jim Eisen, please. Um, this is mainly a housekeeping, uh, issue. Um, if you remember, after we, um, adopted the, the budget, we, uh, presented, uh, an increased salary for the lateral transfers that have three or more years of experience to try to make it more enticing to get qualified candidates. Uh, we increased their salaries from eighteen sixty-nine ninety-two biweekly to twenty-three oh seven sixty-nine, uh, biweekly. Um, only four of those positions, uh, were funded appropriately or listed appropriately in the, uh, salary ordinance. So we're just moving to, uh, decrease the probationary patrolman salary that was listed at four to zero and add those four to the four that were, um, probationary titled, probationary lateral transfers to make that number eight. Uh, we won't need an additional appropriation to fund it as, uh, actively funded under twenty twenty-one budget.
All right, thank you, Chief Eisen.
I know that, I know that your anxious to get this process going. Is this something that would be helpful if we suspended the rules so you could keep moving forward with the?
Uh, yes, uh, we, we are, uh, ending our pre, um, pre-screening process, December thirty-fourth. Um, the merit board, just to give you an update, the merit board will be having a special session, uh, probably sometime in early January, it will have to be before the sixteenth, to amend their, uh, their rules and regs to allow for the laterals. And then our physical agility test, which is the first step, is scheduled for January the sixteenth. So, uh, to have this done before January the sixteenth, I think makes sense. I don't know, it could be a Shawna question, if it has to be done, uh, prior to us beginning the process. Um, that I'm not sure about.
All right, thank you.
Then we'd actually be hired, but it's probably best to have it done and out of the way.
Okay, I move for suspension of the rules for first reading.
Second.
Motion to suspend rules through first reading, we have a second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing done and roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance twenty forty-seven.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Bates?
Aye.
Rules are suspended on ordinance twenty forty-seven through first reading, a vote of eight to zero. We have a motion on first reading.
So moved.
Both.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on ordinance twenty forty-seven?
I just, I, I have a question. Can we assume that we're moving from four to four to eight to zero? That the response has been rather great to the lateral transfer process? From folks who already have police experience?
So, uh, we're about three weeks into it and we have received, uh, right at thirty, uh, applicants. Um, only about twenty-three of those, uh, are going to be, uh, have the, uh, necessary requirements to proceed, but that's not bad for a lateral process because we're actually taking experienced officers from other agencies. Uh, and we are getting a lot, uh, from IMPD. Um, and we've got several from, I would say, we've got one from Florida, one from the Memphis Police Department, one from Louisville, uh, and one from Colorado, so we're going to get in a wide variety.
Thanks, chief.
Good, thank you. All right, any other questions or further discussion? Hearing done and roll call, ordinance twenty forty-seven, first reading.
Dine? Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
William?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
And Campbell?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty forty-seven passes first reading, vote of eight to zero.
Thank you.
You, you, ordinance twenty forty-eight.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three as amended, Chapter seven, Building and Construction Regulations, Article three, Miscellaneous Regulations, Section seven forty-five, to update permit fee schedule and performance security requirements. And I believe there is a request to suspend the rules through first reading on this one. And this ordinance is just updating, you know, that we changed it, uh, rather drastically. And the, um, legislature made a change in twenty nineteen, uh, capping the amount of the security requirement that can be placed on excavation cuts. And we just wanted to change that language so that it is consistent. We'll charge whatever the statute maximally allows, so if it increases, we can increase it without having to amend the ordinance. We also needed to add a couple of different cuts in there that, um, we didn't have on that list for fees before, and that's what this does.
All right, uh, we request for, uh, suspension of rules through first reading. We have a motion, motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on suspension, ordinance twenty forty-eight? Hearing done and roll call, suspension of the rules, ordinance twenty forty-eight.
I'm sorry, Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
He's saying aye.
And that can hear him, Campbell.
Aye.
And Dine.
Aye.
Ordinate, rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of eight to zero in ordinance 2048, do you have a motion, first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine.
Sure.
I can't tell, was that, anyway, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, ordinance 2048, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2048, first reading.
Hill.
Where's the Sam Hill, is Ezra?
Can anyone else hear him?
No, no.
Okay. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
We'll count that as a, ordinance 2048 passes, first reading, vote of seven to zero. Ordinance 2049.
An ordinance transferring funds within the general fund from and for various departments, sponsored by Dine.
Somebody want to speak to this?
Yes, Greg Wright, City Controller, basically, this is all within the general fund budget, what I'm asking for is the ability to shift some funds around that were unappropriated this year, that didn't get spent, and move them into some lines that need short up, the biggest one being the health insurance, last year, you may remember, we did an additional appropriation, this year, we had it in the general fund that we could just move stuff to get there, and I thought that'd be a better way to go about it.
All right, there's a request for suspension of the rules through second reading, do I have a, a motion for suspension through first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance 2049.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
And Hill.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on ordinance 2049, Mr. Hill, now that we got you, do you, would you like to vote on ordinance 2048?
I vote aye on that one.
Okay, all right, then we'll change that to, oh, that's all right, we'll change that to a vote of eight to zero on first reading on ordinance 2048, all right, we have a, ordinance 2049, have a motion for first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper, any discussion, ordinance 2049?
And I have one, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask Mr. Wright about the, as I was reading this, that you used the word catastrophic, and what, in what ways have our insurance been so depleted and over, I guess, oversight, that it has, it was catastrophic in nature?
Well, we've had a couple of employees or dependents who had illnesses that are quite a bit more expensive than a normal year, particularly cancer-related type illnesses, so that will take us up to our stop-loss maximum on those individuals more quickly, so the money goes out the door a lot more quickly on that, keeping in mind that our, our year for insurance actually is April through March, but we are doing the budget for the health insurance for January through December, so we have to kind of adjust on the fly sometimes.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2049, first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2049 passes first reading, eight to zero, do I have a motion on suspension through second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates, any discussion on suspension through second reading? Hearing none, then roll call, on suspension through second reading, ordinance 2049.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance 2049, suspension through second reading passes eight, zero, do you have a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Hopper, any discussion on ordinance 2049? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2049, second reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
And William.
Aye.
Ordinance 2049 passes second reading on a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, ordinance 2050.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code, sections 9106 and 9113, to revise the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the city of Greenwood, Indiana, from the owners and occupiers of properties served by the sewage works of the city, sponsored by Campbell.
All right, I assume someone's here to talk to us about this?
Mr. President, if I could start, please?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Approximately three to four years ago, I was approached by Citizens Energy Group, who bought out the Indianapolis sanitation system, they came into my office with a presentation where they had gone through the I U R C and requested a 500% increase in our sanitation rate to be effective immediately, this not only affected the city of Greenwood, but also Beech Grove, Lawrence, Speedway, the Ben Davis System, and two other systems, which I can't recall right now, we filed an appeal to this, and during the appeal, we were able to mediate it out, at the end of the mediation, the end result was a 250% increase over the next seven years, this is nothing any of us want to talk about or deal with, but unfortunately, it's what's been handed to us, and we have to act upon it quickly, I've met with Commonwealth Engineering, they've done a study over this over the past year, along with in-house employees, especially Mr. Stone, who's here tonight, along with Greg Wright, to talk about this, this is nothing we want to have to hand out, but unfortunately, it's something that we are handed by the regulatory committee that we have to deal with, and tonight, we're going to talk about two different things, one is the standard rate that needs to be handed out with an increase that unfortunately is going to need to be this next year, along with the, the talking about of a two-tiered rate, we need to discuss that tonight, it's going to be presented tonight, but no action needs to be taken upon that two-tiered rate tonight, with that information, I'm going to hand it over to Adam to give you the rest of the information that's necessary.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, can everyone hear me, hear me okay, and then I just tried to share a presentation with you, can, can you see that as well, I see a thumbs up from Councilman Bates, thank you, all right, well, very, very good, what I'd like to do is just run through, we have put together about 10 or 15 slides here, to just walk through, walk through how the rates were configured, and then ultimately, the justification for, for what's, what's driving, driving this as well, I would like to start by saying that this ordinance is looking at rates for the year, calendar years, 2021 to 2025, the current rate ordinance ran from 2016 to the end of 2020. Just a bit of historical review, you know, the mayor, the mayor mentioned the Citizens' Treatment Rate Settlement, which is the main reason for, for the rate, rate adjustment, but just for some historical context as well, the utility, specifically the sanitation utility, has been also, for the last several years, working to comply Indiana Department of Environment, Environmental Management as well, via its agreed order, so as the mayor mentioned, we'll be discussing a two-tier rate, rate methodology this evening, the utility is required to propose that to council by the end of this year, there will be no action requested, there will be no vote requested on that matter, ultimately, we would just ask that council take that under advisement, however, this ordinance for the normal rates and charges is really what the rest of this presentation is, is going to be geared towards, so really, this all dates back to an overflow incident, there, that triggered the I D M compliance plan, the city and to its utility, and with the help of council, has been able to invest a tremendous amount to improve its, its utilities over the years, and that's what's got us to today, unfortunately, what you see here is, the current rates were passed in the fall of 2016, and immediately following year, there was a settlement reached with Citizens Energy, who processes Greenwood wastewater's treatment, which is increased that, or implemented that phase in of that nearly 500% rate increase on the treatment processing, so over the last few years, that's been able to be absorbed, but ultimately, it's gotten to the point where it's escalating at a manner that we can no longer, the revenues can no longer sustain it, so we talked about this, and we'll, we'll mention this outside of the ordinance, we'll talk as kind of a part two of this presentation, we'll propose the two-tier rate, rate structure to meet the agreed order milestone, additionally, the mayor mentioned engaging Commonwealth Engineering, to look at the system, look at I N I, and to look at treatment alternatives, and part of their preliminary engineering report that was published, introduced several capital improvements, those have all been worked into this rate study, so you see more of the programmatic items, like sewer relining, that's going through and relining the old, old pipes throughout the system, you'll also see large capital projects, like the Western Regional Interceptor, which is a relief interceptor, being constructed on the west side of the system's boundaries, and then you'll see some anticipated future bond issuances for next year, to make significant investments in the system, where there are large intended sources for, of I N I, I N I is a term you'll hear used throughout, many of you may know what that is, many of you may not, that, that acronym stands for inflow and infiltration to the system, there's primarily two sources, now I'm an accountant, I'm not a civil engineer, but I'm going to do my best here, there's essentially, both are rainwater sources, and essentially, they're collected primarily through illicit connections, whereby a sump pump or a downspout is actually connected directly into the sewer system, so you're essentially collecting, and then paying to treat rainwater, the other source is groundwater, so those are, these are situations where maybe a lateral connection actually is broke, so when groundwater pools, it's actually seeping into the system that way, so there's a large anticipated bond next year to make continued design and planning and, and work along, specifically along the Pleasant Run Interceptor, which is geographically speaking, an east-west interceptor that's right in about the middle of this, middle of the city and middle of this system, for that matter, so these have been worked in, I'm happy to, you know, share this, but you don't necessarily need to go through all the detail here, but really, the big projects are obviously the Western Regional Interceptor, and then the continued work to mitigate the inflow and infiltration, as long as the continued relining program, so these are all the things that the rate study creates and provides for, in all, you know, there's about $56 million being planned to be reinvested back into the utility over the next five years, so as far as what, what this means, so there's really two driving forces in, in these utilities, municipal-owned utilities, you have kind of state external regulations, environmental standards, so that's obviously I D M and the long-term compliance plan that the, the city's utility is under, and then you have, in Greenwood's case, you have the fact that the treatment of wastewater is actually outsourced, so it's done through a partnership agreement with Citizens Energy, when we look at those two factors, the, when we look at the current rates, and we model those out over projected growth, both, and we look at projected changes and operating costs, and we address all those capital needs that we just looked at, that came through the engineering plans, adjust for the planned and anticipated debt that would be coming online, really, if we look at everything, and we just hold the treatment costs as they were for many decades, really, what you'll see here is that the baseline revenue requirements are pretty much in line with the expected, I'm sorry, the baseline expenditure requirements are pretty much right in line with the expected operating revenues, you know, plus or minus, you know, there's, there's a few years here where the utility would possibly go negative revenue, which may, would, would, maybe need to be adjusted, but by and large, the current rates that customers are paying would be pretty much sufficient for the, the service level that is expected and required over the next five years to remain compliant, unfortunately, this did not stay the same, so this, this rate, the 76 cents per 1,000 gallons, this is how the city is billed for treatment, a flows sent to Citizens Energy, and as the mayor said in his opening statement, this is what they approached him to increase that to $5.76, initially, that was asked to be increased in one step, it was settled, an agreement to be phased in over many years, and ultimately, it's that phase in of those costs that are not contemplated in the current rate structure, the sole reason why, why we're here this evening, so when we look at the phase in of those rates, so we're at 76 cents today, and, I'm sorry, 76 cents was in 2016, fast forward to today, we've started to get into the phase in of that settlement, so the utility has already taken on, if you will, bore the cost of the first two steps in this, without passing through a dollar of rate increase onto ratepayers, going into 2021, there's about another large percent increase, going up to $1.41, so nearly doubling from where, where it started already, and you can see that the settlement introduces three phases of, of escalations, the first phase, which aligns to this rate ordinance, is defined as phase one, and it goes through the end of 2025, and it takes rates all the way up to $2.49 per 1,000 gallons, so effectively, a little over a 300% increase, in a few short years from current levels, continuing on, this is not in this rate period, but just to directionally show where, where these estimates are pointing, if you assume, you know, phase two actually says that there's about four years to go from the 2.49 to the, you have till the end of 2029, to get to the then Citizens Energy cost of service, now in 2016, that cost of service was $5. Now, in 2016, that cost of service was $5.76. If we assume a 4% inflation rate for their utility and their cost of service, which is plus or minus about what their six-year average has been. And we just straight line that across, so we can see where our intersection, uh, point will be. You know, you can easily see seven, eight, nine, $10 per 1,000 gallons. And the current rates that customers are paying contemplated 76 cents. So, um, certainly, um, what this has led to is quite a bit of increase of expense and that'll continue, uh, throughout this, uh, phase and in the, in the future rate studies, uh, for that matter. So, you know, we just talked about this, this is the snippet of those rates that are in the 2021 to 2025. So these are fixed in the agreement. These are, these are known amounts that will be billed each year per the, per the agreement. Uh, we're going into 2021, so we're just getting ready to do that good jump to the dollar 41. And then this is billed for every thousand gallons on all of the flows that get metered to Citizens Energy, specifically the Belmont Plant. And so this is where, um, the flows come into bed. So on a, on a typical, typical year, there's anywhere between three and three and a half billion gallons of wastewater, uh, shipped to that, to that plant. And as a result of growth and those types of things, uh, that is projected to increase at about 3% per year o- over the planned, planned period. So it's really the combination of increased flows as well as dramatic increase in the rates. But is what's creating this middle chart that you see before you this evening. So the blue line is the expected treatment expense by taking the estimated flows based on the known rate. And you can see, um, this gold line, this yellow line, if you will, is what the current rates and charges budgeted. For, for about 30 years, the utility was always paying around 76 cents per 1,000 gallons. So the last time that you all, uh, voted on a rate structure, you assumed about a three mil, three million dollar per year expense. Over the last two years, the utility's been able to find other cost savings to try to adjust for that. It's already up over four, 4.2, it's budgeted at 5.6 next year. Uh, it just really continues to escalate. In the, the last year of the plan study, it's touching $11 million. So it more than almost, almost quadruples, but well over a 300% increase from the current, current, uh, current state. And as we saw just a few slides ago, there, there isn't currently revenue, um, being generated for this type of, type of wholesale expense pass through. So, um, obviously the utility is, is looking at alternatives to lower treatment costs. That, you know, uh, combination of just of what's, what's being implemented over the next five years with phase one. And then as yet one chart showed really directionally where it's going long-term with regards to phase two and phase three. So, um, wh- what we can share this evening is that, uh, Commonwealth Engineering Report provided mu- many alternatives as far as trying to reduce both INI, which off lowers the amount of rainwater that's being paid to be treated. Um, so that would be a significant cost reduction. Um, there's capital plans to look at neutralizing flows to, to eliminate peak, uh, surcharges and tho- those types of things to reduce stress on the system to lower cost. And as then, as well as other treatment alternatives, uh, at large to, to try to mitigate how much is treated, uh, at those, at those ever higher, higher rates. Um, additionally, the two-tier surcharge that will be discussed, uh, at the conclusion of this, uh, ordinance presentation is, is another way of looking at trying to lower treatment costs because it's, it's trying to encourage INI compliance. It's trying to encourage that the utility and then doubt, you know, therefore the utility ratepayers aren't paying, uh, those high, high treatment rates to process rainwater. So, you know, as we start to transition the operational estimates into dollars, what you'll see here is the first, uh, table that you saw with the amounts was the baseline, assuming no change, no change in the rates. This is saying, oh, this is acknowledging, hey, that settlement did get passed. These are known treatment rates that are going to be implemented. If no other changes happen, there was no other changes in any other operating cost. What's, what's going to have to be, uh, adjusted? Here would be the annual structural deficit if no changes are made. So next year, uh, the utility would be estimating a 1.45 million dollar cash burn. And that would increase exponentially up to nearly 7.4 million per year and, uh, net, net, uh, deficit, uh, per, per year. So ultimately that's leading to a proposed rate increase. The 2021 to 2025, uh, year was picked, um, mostly because it aligned to phase one. Uh, was the most predictable, also gives everyone the mo- the longest window to, to know what, uh, the rates will be for their planning purposes. And as far as the, um, implementate, the rate implementation phase in option that the utility selected from the current rates, next year would be a, a one-time 25% increase followed by four concurrent 5% increases. The utility has, uh, different charge classes. Some, the majority of customers are on a, uh, consumption metered type, type of an account whereby they have a monthly base charge and then a usage charge. There are a few that are monthly un-metered as well. Uh, these are all unilaterally being, uh, applied those same percentages for fairness. And then majority of residential customers are a 5 eighths to three-quarter inch meter, uh, water supply. Um, you can see them as well as the high, higher usage, uh, commercial and industrial users all, uh, unilaterally, again, for fairness, receive the same percent, uh, percent increases. So as far as how the adjusted bills would compare, utility looked at, uh, a peer group here with Greenwood being, being in the middle. This assumes a residential 5 eighths to three-quarter inch meter, 4,000 monthly gallons. And this is looking at, uh, the, the rates for 2021, comparing both geographically, um, you know, with, with Bargersville and then Plainfield, you'll see that they would both be slightly less. Um, however, Bargersville is obviously smaller population as well as Plainfield. Uh, you also notice these, both of these have, um, in-house, in-house treatment facilities. Whereas when you look to the right, um, uh, Westfield actually recently sold the utility to Citizens, uh, Energy and then City Nap, City of Indianapolis years ago, uh, sold to Citizens, Citizens Energy. So, so Greenwood would be, be right, right in the middle. Um, and then you can see, um, see the comparison there. Looking a little broader, looking at the statewide average, uh, Baker Tilly provides a comparison survey on for all responding utilities statewide. They've been doing it now for, for many, many years. So, um, comparing the statewide average from 1990, uh, through, through today. So the blue line is the state average utility bill. This is again for residential, uh, customer, 4,000 gallons a month. As opposed to, uh, so that what Greenwood resident would have actually paid versus the state, you can see the, for many years, this, uh, the utility was actually quite a bit under the state average. Then you can see, uh, that overflow incident was in 2011, which really drove the IDM agreed order and capital plan. You know, the $60 million Western Regional Interceptor came online shortly, shortly thereafter, followed by seven and a half million in, in Pleasant Creek and, uh, relining project. So ultimately you'd see that, you see that gap narrow a bit as the IDM compliance plan started to really get implemented. And then fast forward to tonight, more in 2020, um, the utility is approximately 90% of average today. Looking back from 1990 to today, the statewide average increase every year is approximately 8% per year. Assuming that long-term trend continues, overlaying that with the proposed rates that you just saw in the previous slide out through 2025, you'd see that really the 2021 jump gets the utility right in line with the statewide average. But then projecting out through the, through the, uh, through the five years would put the utility right back and it's kind of long-term average of being at about 90, 90 or so percent of the, of the, uh, state average. So just trying to give you two different ways to, to compare. So ultimately what does this mean? Um, you know, uh, 25% and 5% of those kind of things. So for majority of accounts are residential, um, and the majority of residential are 5 eighths to three-quarter inch meter, uh, customers. And we mentioned earlier that these are consumption-driven accounts. So not everyone's going to pay the same amount. And their, their can, their actual ha- their interaction engagement with usage can, can influence about 50% of their bill. So first looking at a 3,000 gallon monthly account, this might be someone who maybe is, um, uh, maybe a one or two occupant, kind of low, low impact user. Um, currently they're paying just under $38 a month for sewer, and this is sewer only. They would be, uh, going to $47, uh, dollars next year. Uh, I believe the ordinance is written that this would be going into effect February 1st if approved. So essentially an increase of $10 per month next year, uh, followed by a few dollars each year per month for cumulative difference, maximum difference from the end of 2025, five years from today, uh, would be a $20, $20 a month difference, uh, for that, for that customer. Jumping to the other end of the spectrum, you know, 7,000 gallons, this is someone who's maybe more, um, higher, higher usage and um, maybe a family, more showers, they're going to increase about $15 next year per month and then $30 over, over the cumulative time. So, um, so that's the, kind of the, the residential impact of the proposed rates. Utility would also like to just remind folks that, um, there are, there are ways to, to proactively lower your bill as well. The utility offers a electric bill credit program that provides a $10, uh, one-time, uh, credit. All it requires is that for at least a six-month, uh, duration, you, uh, enroll an email bill statement and, uh, ACH payments. So it's a way to help the utility save administrative costs and those costs are passed on to you to help offset, um, offset your, your, your bill. So with that, we'll, uh, we'll open it up for questions and that concludes the presentation of the, the normal rate, uh, and charges ordinance.
Any questions for Adam at this time or Mr. White?
President, I have one for Adam.
Yes.
It's kind of a, I don't know if it's a conceptual question or not, but suppose, um, you know, with that five-year period of time, uh, you know, we have a development and, uh, we, uh, you know, bit, homes come online, uh, 100 homes a year, whatever. Uh, obviously that's more consumption, but it's also more, um, uh, revenue. So does that just stand up in it being a wash or what kind of ramifications would that have?
Yeah, goo- good question, Councilman Bates. Um, so the new, new accounts are, so there would be an, uh, impact fee generated on the construction of the homes, which would help, help pay for any extensions or new, new, uh, utility infrastructure that would need to go into the ground to serve that new community. So that's the intended, intended source for that. You are correct that then there would be additional consumption coming in off of those homes. Um, but because of the way the ordinance is written, there is a billing mechanism for that, for that consumption. So it, in, in, in theory, it should be, that scenario should be accretive to the utilities, to the utilities, uh, revenue. So it should actually help, help the, uh, bottom line, if you will, um, to, to, it just creates additional revenue sources on the top line with more likely than not, um, you know, the utility is not going to necessarily need to go hire a new tech or something like that just because of one neighborhood. So assuming that the, uh, neighborhood's able to, through its own impact fees, able to address its own items and it doesn't create any downstream system issues, um, with cards of backups or anything like that, then in theory, growth would be a positive to the revenue of the, of the utility. Does that answer your question, Councilman Bates?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Right. Any other questions for Adam at this time?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Kevon had a question, uh, Councilman Williams here. Uh, Mr. Stone, I guess with the proposed rate increases, I know we have a rather large increase year one, uh, with smaller revenue increases the following years. Uh, is there any classification reason for not just making a level, lower percentage across the board, uh, to prevent such a spike in year one?
Yep. Yeah. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to take that. Uh, so we, you know, there was a group of, of city and utility officials that have been looking at this for the better part of the year. And, um, one of the implement, rate implementation, uh, schedules that was looked at is a straight line implementation. And that obviously would have lowered the next year adjustment, it would have raised it subsequently in the, the four following years. The, really what happens in that situation, when you, when you look at the math, is that over the five years, the first four years, you're, you cast the utility in what's called a structured deficit. Structured deficit is where on a pro forma basis, you have more expenditures than you have projected revenue. Um, that creates a lot of challenges, uh, financially. Uh, one, one of them is because the utility has, um, several outstanding bondholders. Um, also, as mentioned in the CIP Capital Improvement Plan, the utility is anticipating issuing bonds to address the INI to try to lower the long-term cost next year. It's, it's practically impossible. Um, and if it, if it's not completely impossible, it is not financially uh, prudent to try to go issue revenue bonds in a structured deficit. The, the, the actual bondholders themselves, the market itself, uh, would likely require the utility be in such a state that it's not in a structured deficit. Um, so that is ultimately why, um, you see the 25% in year one. It, it, it guarantees that, that structured deficit situation is not, not in the, not in the case. It's soon, it makes it to whereby the utility has a, you know, projected revenue, uh, that's slightly higher than its expenses for each of the five planning years so that it has a good financial, um, uh, projection when it goes to, goes, uh, goes forward in time and doesn't put it under any undue financial distress over the next, next few years as those additional revenues would be coming, coming online.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just one quick one, Adam, and I don't, probably it's not very, uh, although hurtful or whatever the word I want to use here is, but you do have homes, uh, for whatever reason, you know, don't pay their utility. And there's a lien put up on that home until which time it can be, uh, uh, sold at auction or whatever. Uh, so what kind of a impact would that have on this whole scenario?
Yep. So the, the current revenue model is assumes a 5% ba- bad debt. Uh, so it does assume that there's a point, there's a point at which billed, billed revenue is uncollectible completely. Now, with that said, you, you, what you articulated is the lien collection process, which helps to ensure that, um, a large percent of billed revenue is, is collected. It just becomes a matter of when. So, so essentially what, what the revenue forecast includes is it essentially assumes that all revenue- So, so essentially what, what the revenue forecast includes is it essentially assumes that all revenue billed but for five, five percent is ultimately going to be collected upon the utility. Whether or not it's collected in the normal, you know, thirty-day cash, cash collection cycle or potentially eighteen-month lien process is, is, is really more of a, a function of managing the utility's balance sheet for, for, uh, a function of kind of revenues, inflows and outflows. It's been trying to be that, that lien receivable amount is being adjusted because one of the actual revenue uh, sources, when we adjust from accrual to cash basis, are, is actually a, uh, an estimate for lien receipts that have been collected in the current year that were really generated from revenues earned in a prior period. And we take the average, average amount of those lien, lien collections. So ultimately it is factored in. Um, and it's also factored in, uh, through that process to continue, uh, through the full, through the full five years. So I hope that, I hope that makes sense.
Yes. Good.
All right. Good questions for Adam at this time concerning the proposed rate structures. I don't want to cut us off, but I would like to move on. I know Adam would like to talk to us about the two-tier rate proposal. So, Adam?
Yep, I'm going to switch my screen here. Okay. And, all right, let me see if I can, uh, okay. So as far as the, the two-tier, so this is outside of this ordinance, there's no, there's no action that, that the utility is asking for, uh, this evening. As, as you saw in the presentation a couple of different times, the IDEM agreed order requires that the utility per- propose a two-tier rate structure to the common council by the end of the calendar year. Um, so ultimately what, what I'm getting ready to share is that proposed two-tier rate structure. And then what the, the ask of the team is, is for the council to ultimately take that under advisement and ultimately direct the utility staff, utility and city staff on, on a, on a path to proceed, either by adopting a two-tier structure, by choosing not to adopt a two-tier structure, or advising, uh, city and utility staff to just invest, investigate the program further. Um, so with that said, let me go ahead and share my screen and let me show you the computation of the proposal. So, um, ultimately what, uh, we have done is we have, we have reached out to a few different, uh, providers. We talked to Commonwealth Engineering, who is the, the major hydraulic engineer, uh, that studied the system this year. We also did work, reach out to IDEM to get, uh, any, any best practices or methodologies for such a two-tier rate structure. And, um, unfortunately, um, you know, what, what has been learned in that process is that, um, there's, there's not a, uh, there's not necessarily a, a clear-cut way to do this. So what we have done is using the engineer's best estimates on what the INI is and trying to be very conservative there. The rate study essentially has estimated the cost to the utility related to inflow and infiltration. And that's what you see here in this top chart. It looks at the total estimated flows. Excuse me. And it compares that with the low-end estimates of what the system INI is. So three-quarters of a million gallons per year of rainwater into the system. Compares that to the new treatment rates that you saw in your presentation. And then the best engineer and staff estimates right now are that approximately twenty-six hundred accounts violate, violate this. So then that's ultimately the methodology that's used to compute an annualized surcharge of six hundred and fifteen dollars, which breaks into a monthly sur- surcharge for non-certified accounts of fifty-one dollars and thirty cents. So assuming a five-eighths meter, forty-seven hundred gallons, you can see the impact on a total, total bill over the full five years, but ultimately it's really this, um, monthly surcharge at phase N, this fifty-one thirty, that is the proposal. So this would be a fixed amount that would be added on to, um, additional rates and charges. So base and consumption charges for all accounts that have otherwise not certified, that their downspouts, sun pump or any other water sources are connected to Greenwood Utility System and thereby contributing to, um, annual INI that has to be treated and paid by the, the rate, ratepayers. Much needs to be analyzed about this, um, with regards to marking the accounts, et cetera. But, uh, with that said, this is the proposed two-tier and, uh, happy to take any questions, um, that you may have.
The, uh, I do have a question. When it talks about, uh, certified, uh, or uh, account, non-certified accounts, are we assuming that all accounts are non-certified and there's a certification process they have to go through? Before they're not charged the fifty-one thirty?
Think that's one of the items that would need to be more vetted. Um, but the general, general premise is that that would, that a majority of the homes would need to be evaluated for that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I may have an issue with that. I really would like that to be looked at a little further, at least that one portion, because then technically you're assuming people are guilty until proven innocent.
Yep. One of, one of the items that I would also, uh, just want to make sure you're aware of is that as far as an implementation timeline, if, if council decided that this is something that they would want to pursue, it's staff's and the utility's opinion that you would also, uh, provide a, at least a twelve-month phase-in period whereby proper notifications and individuals had plenty of time to take those proactive steps um, a- as well. So this is unlike the rates and charges ordinance that if approved would go into effect, you know, as early as February of next year. This is really something that ultimately is just being proposed. And if, if the council feels strongly to pursue this, then it would be the staff and officials' recommendation to investigate further and come back to you all with a more fully-developed proposal of how to implement and, and actually effectively manage the program.
All right. Anyone else have a question for Adam on this two-tier proposal?
Adam, I missed, you projected how many month, a period of how many months to reevaluate that?
Uh, as, as far as a reevaluation period, there's, there's not necessarily anything that I'm aware of other than just for the proposal action, uh, tonight, uh, with regards to if, if council, Councilman Gibson, if you all decided that you would want to proceed, then I believe the, uh, discussion internally has been a twelve-month, twelve-month phase-in. So essentially from your all's action to move forward. Uh, let's say you adopted, the adopted surcharge that was proposed. The recommendation is that you provide at least a twelve-month, essentially grace period, if you will, whereby the notifications and the instructions and the document, all, all the policies and procedures can be both developed and, and, uh, communicated to, to the, uh, ratepayers.
Okay, then if they've gotten the certainties already, those would stay in place, they wouldn't have to redo those?
That, that's, that's, that's the assumption, yes.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Stone?
So Adam, uh, commenting on what, uh, Counselor, uh, Campbell stated a moment ago, uh, do we assume that, uh, all of the residences of our city are, uh, non-certified or how, how do you become certified if you're non-certified?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Bates, if I could talk to that and Mr. Campbell both. If you recall, um, about a year and a half ago, we did a program through the stormwater department.
Right.
Where we allowed people, we, we sent notices out to neighborhoods and allowed people to be inspected at that time. So all of those homes that have already been inspected would already be grandfathered in. So we've already started that program. That program has ended, um, and it's not to say that we wouldn't try it again to get more compliance. The other thing which I've talked to many of you about is also initiating an ordinance of any time a home goes up for sale in the city or also if we can do it, any home that is being serviced by our sanitary system even outside of the city. An ordinance being acted that when that home goes up for sale, that when it is inspected, part of the inspection would require that, um, it be in, the sun pump and downspouts be inspected to make sure they're not hooked up to the city sewer system and if they are, that they are removed from that system. And that would help us a lot with a lot of this issue right off the bat.
Okay. So I could just assume then, uh, we went through that program a year or so ago. Uh, I don't know that I did anything because I know that I'm in compliance. I know there was a charge, seemed like someone that was a plumber or certified could come to your home, check it out, uh, let the city know that, uh, you're not doing anything, putting it into the sewer system. And so you're, uh, you're good to go.
I believe that was how it is, Mr. Bates, but I'd have to go back and look. It's been quite a while since I've looked at that.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'm just interested, uh, you know, in being sure that I'm, uh, you know, certified, our residents.
Well, absolutely. Just like when I purchased my house two and a half years ago, it was illegally hooked up.
Huh.
And the inspector found that and I had it changed over to, I now get to water my yard every day.
All right.
All right. Any other questions from the council?
So Mayor, would it help for you to have direction from the council that we'd like to move forward on getting that aspect in place because there's some things that we don't need to wait for further information on. We know that we've got a lot of infiltration.
To your system, there are some obvious questions and details need to be worked out. But, um, I don't know if you need a consensus from the council or just, um, a sense that we were interested in this.
Sean, I'll, I'll defer to you on the, the, if we need a motion or, or not, uh, what, what would you suggest?
It is helpful to have one for the record to show compliance, you know, with our compliance plan that maybe they, the council moved to direct staff to investigate further and propose an ordinance or some sort of process or procedure and bring it back to the council for consideration.
All right. Someone willing to make that motion or anyone's have, have a comment at this point, question?
Yeah, if, if this is something that's going to raise the average citizen's bill, I don't think we should hurry it whatsoever.
I, I agree.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it and I support it one hundred percent. But I see no, unless, unless the staff tells us that we're in a hurry to do this, I don't see the purpose in moving it forward any quick, more quickly than what is necessary.
If I remember the chart correctly, we are estimating about twenty-six hundred homes that, uh, are in vi- in violation of this at the present. And that fifty-some dollar a month fee would only affect those homes if we were able to narrow it down, uh, close enough. Is that correct, Adam?
Yes, with that la- I would just underline and highlight that last part. We need the, the mechanism of how to narrow to that is, is what needs to be evaluated.
Yeah. Well, I, I would be interested in the city staff looking into that and coming back to us in the new year with more information on that. And I think, uh, Ms. Coon suggested that having a motion would help for the record, so.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
I'll move that the, uh, council direct for further investigation into that two-tier system.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on that? And this is just, uh, to direct the city to investigate the proposal further and come up with some more details for us. So any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
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 All opposed, light sign? Hearing no opposition, then we'll say that motion passed eight to zero. All right. Anything else, Mr. Stone?
No, 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 thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate all the time tonight. Thank you.
But thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate that. Uh, moving on miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items in this case that are not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight and wish to speak to the council, uh, please state your name and address for the record. Hearing none. Then moving on to miscellaneous council business. I've, uh, sent you all a couple of emails here recently about our appointments that are coming up at our next council meeting. Um, and I updated you today. I have talked with, uh, Paul Saint Pierre, who's our, uh, appointee to the Greenwood Community Development Corporation, and he is interested in continuing. I've also spoken with Bill Welch, um, who is our appointee to the, uh, Fire Merit Board. But, uh, under the new Fire Merit Board structure, we will need to, uh, reappoint or appoint something. We don't have to reappoint Mr. Welch, but he has indicated a desire to continue to serve. And, um, we have two appointees under the new merit system, one of which has to be Republican and one a Democrat. Mr. Welch is a Republican and, uh, since he's been on the board before, I would suggest that we make his appointment, the four-year appointment, and the other new person, whoever that might be, a two-year appointment. So those appointments are staggered and, uh, the new appointee would have to be a Democrat. And so we are open for suggestions. If you know of anybody, uh, that is a Democrat that would be willing to sit on that board, I've also reached out to Chief Hoggett to, uh, get any recommendations from him. Um, the other thing is, I mentioned in an earlier email today, uh, in talking to the mayor, we are contemplating having our meetings in person starting next year in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the meetings technically would still be virtual in that, uh, no, none of the public would be allowed in the meetings. Uh, most city staff would not be there. Presenters would still do their, uh, presentations virtually. But we would be able to, uh, be in the same room, uh, discuss things better, more easily. And so that is something that, uh, we are currently at this time planning on for a January fourth meeting. And of course, if you have any questions or thoughts on that, uh, please, uh, let us know. Anything, any other councilor have a, uh, anything tonight?
Uh, Mr. Campbell, I did, uh, send you a, uh, possibility of two people that is Democrats. Uh, I sent an email to you in response to your email to me. Uh, I don't know that they'd be willing or not, but, uh, if we could reach out to them, uh, either one could or would be willing.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we will reach out to them. So, uh, see what we can do. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bates. All right. Uh, anything else? You know, from any other counselors?
Mr. President, on those appointment, uh, Drew Foster had also, uh, told me that he was interested in continuing to serve, and I think I had passed that on to you.
Yes, you had, but Drew's appointment was a four-year appointment and his doesn't expire until December twenty-three. So he's good for another three years.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, Randy Gooden is good until two thousand twenty-two. He's our appointee to the Greenwood Economic Development Corporation. Um, we will need to consider, uh, the, on the Police Merit Commission, our current, uh, appoint, or one of our current appointees, our current Democrat appointee, her term expires, it's Martha McQueen, her term expires on March the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So we will have to take a look at that. But I think we're good on all the others. I've talked to everybody but Mr. Lexi about, um, is, uh, he's a one-year appointee to the Greenwood Solid Waste District Management Board. Uh, but, uh, I know that's an exciting, exciting position. He means- Uh, but, uh, I know that's an exciting, exciting position. He may, he may never want to give that up. I don't know.
I'm sure he wants to stay.
Yeah. So. All right. Anything else from the council?
Mike, uh, this past Friday, at Johnson Memorial Hospital, they started putting vaccine in our frontline healthcare workers. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, I was there. I happened to be staffing it for the State Department of Health and, uh, Greenwood EMS is there, White River EMS coming through. So our, our frontline guys and gals are starting to get vaccines. So hopefully we can get back to some semblance of abnormalcy here.
That would be nice.
Next year.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hopper. Anything else? All right. Other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council.
There's none. Thank you.
Controller?
None for me.
Mayor?
The only comment, Mr. Campbell, I sent you a quick text, but, uh, your appointees also could be independents or libertarians if we could find any of those.
Okay, that's true.
It opens you up a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you. With maybe more libertarians in Johnson County than Democrats.
Other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we did pass a couple ordinances tonight through second reading. Uh, please, uh, take the time, uh, in the next day or two to stop by the city building and sign those. It would be greatly appreciated, I know. All right. Uh, one thing I miss about not meeting in person is I can't bang my gavel. Uh, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you all very much.
Christmas.
Stay safe.